I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for attending this evening. We have Lee Shimick and Mike Murray are unable to attend tonight. All other members are here. With that, I would like to appoint Tom Anderson to act as clerk pro tem for the evening. With that, I'd like to, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So moved by Tom, second, by Stacy. Any questions, comments, or requests? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries five zero. Consent agenda. In your packet tonight, you have the check wire transfer dispersment summary, approval of board minutes from January, from the regular school board meeting of January 10th and January 24th, as well as the organizational meeting from January 10th, resignations as presented, and donations of $400 from Taylor Gatazki, who's a Hidden Oaks student to the music department at Hidden Oaks. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
By Todd, second, by Stacy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries five zero. And we're at Laker Pride.
We are at Laker Pride. I'm going to call on Sam Richardson to introduce some very special dads who have formed and are very active at Glendale Elementary. Do you want to tell us about them?
Yep. Dr. Groover, school board, good evening. Tonight for our Laker Pride, we have the Dads of Glendale students, the Dogs, and I'll invite them to come up. We have a few of the, a few of the many members. It's a, it's a fluid group, but these, these are the dads who are here tonight, so would you like them to step into the ring?
Sure. Come up and sit down.
I'll do the next one.
Camera.
Last fall, we had the first PTC meeting, and Scott Calb, who is on this side, as he was leaving the house, his wife said, "You know, you probably will be the only male there." And he had had a first grader, never been to the PTC meeting, so as he arrived, he was surprised to find that this was true. After the meeting, he stuck around and talked with the PTC president, Michelle Kiper, about what it would take to get dads more involved at Glendale. And so at Devonny's, a month later, this group was formed. And so the, the Dads of Glendale Students was the name they arrived at. They had a, one of the fathers, Greg Chemis, came up with a logo that was quickly put into play by Troy Bauer, who created some apparel that they can choose colors and styles, and they're, they're showing their, their varieties here. The goal of the group was really to do several things. First of all, get dads more involved in the school and volunteering. We have a Friday, standing Friday at the end of each month where dads and grandfathers come and eat with their kids and also volunteer in the classroom. They also wanted some events that were a little bit more dad-friendly, and so they had a sledding night last year and movie night that was really popular with the kids. And then they also have done some service projects for the school. And so the back of our Glendale playground area, Glendale Garden, they've done massive amounts of work to restore that and do a beautification project. So they have just been a wonderful help to our school, and not only that, they have great camaraderie. So the, as I said, the group's fluid. Tonight, there is one, two, three, four, five, six, but there's, can be up to twenty, thirty guys at some of their events and meetings. So they've just been a wonderful asset for Glendale, and, and they have rock star status with the kids. When they see the, the Dogs logo, they get a lot of high fives from that, so very thankful for these guys.
Don't they come during the day, too?
Yep, they will volunteer in the classroom or, or do the, the visit for lunch and then stay after and help in their kids' class. So Scott Calb, Troy Bauer, Mike Blum, Greg Kerr, Darren Kiper, and Bill Shannon are a few of the proud who are here tonight.
Well, we're very proud of you and of the work that you're doing. It's kind of legendary in our school district now that there's actually a dads group at one of our elementary schools. So we wanted to bring you in tonight just to give you an opportunity to be recognized for the work that you've done and to show your apparel, of course. We're quite impressed. I have to tell you, the first day of school, I was over at Glendale. Maybe it was the second day, I'm not sure, but the flower beds were absolutely meticulously done. I was so impressed, I thought that this has been done at every school, and in fact, it was the work that you had done had completed, this getting, preparing the school for coming back to its session. Is that true?
Yep. No, they all summer on some of the hottest days, actually, they pick, so.
Yeah, so congratulations to each of you.
No, I just wanted to thank you all. It's a, it's a great program, and I was one of the only dads to show up at PTC maybe, so I, I know exactly what you're feeling, but hopefully, this is a program that we'll see properly through because I think you guys are a shining example of the commitment that we see throughout our district and partnership. So thank you all very much.
Did any of you want to speak?
Sure.
Okay.
Please talk to the left. Everybody on the phone, put a pair on, not the sound.
Yeah. Okay.
I guess I just want to say thank you, take a look at you, Sam Richardson, Principal at Glendale, because without you, we wouldn't have been able to have the, you know, as many parents informed of our group at the beginning. And the Glendale PTC really has supported us a lot financially.
PTC, Glendale PTC has really helped us financially and morally, and they were the first ones that sort of ribbed us into saying, "Yeah, start a dads group, I dare you." So, so we couldn't have done it without that support, and of course, all the dads, and this is just a smattering of the twenty or so that we have coming to the meetings and, and showing up at these events we have. So just wanted to make sure everybody got their, their thanks.
It's awesome to recognize our volunteers and the work that they do, so this was a special opportunity for us. And the second opportunity is to recognize a staff member. Our own Deb Sunderman has been named the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools Teacher of the Year, and will be competing at the state level now for that recognition by our state. And we are very proud of Deb. Would you come down, Deb? We're very proud of the, the work that she continues to do and the leadership that she provides for our students here in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. We'll come over here. In our physical education department, and I was just there last week when all of the snow, the skis, skiers were out, and it was a beautiful day. You've had some good weather for it. All the students get outside and get to enjoy our beautiful outdoors here in Prior Lake Savage because of your leadership and the kinds of programs that you've developed over the years. So we're very proud of you and the accomplishments that you've had and made, made happen for our students in our district. And I know that Eric would like to say something, too, and then I'll head it back to you. Can you get us a second?
No, I've known Mrs. Sunderman for several years, going on decades. She was one of my teachers and a terrific educator who pushed all of her students to be her best, and I can't think of anybody more deserving for this award than you, so thank you.
Um, I'll just keep it brief. You know, it's just, it's a wonderful accomplishment of all the teachers of the district. Each of us continue and push each other to be better, and I think that's, and we do that because of the kids. So, thank you very much.
And that sums it all up for Deb, it's all about the kids. So thank you and congratulations.
We'll just give Dr. Groover a minute here to get back.
I'm coming back.
Well, that's okay. We have the webcam now, people don't. We have Laker Showcase, and we have Kids Company and Community Ed will be talking to us.
Good evening. Becky and I are here tonight to showcase our community education Kids Company program and the difference that they're making. Kids Company is our district's village care program, which currently serves close to 700 students, which is about 23 percent of our elementary school population. We're open before and after school and on release days, and we provide a safe, quality, and enriching environment for our students from pre-K through fifth grade. Tonight, we're showcasing some of the many service projects that teach our students leadership skills and communication skills, cooperation, public speaking, and other life skills. More importantly, the students, they learn the value of giving to others and to making a difference, especially for those that might be less fortunate than they are. We are mainly featuring our Westwood and our Glendale sites, but we want you to know that many of these service projects occur throughout the elementary school sites. This is a photo of Glendale making blankets, and I believe Becky will be speaking to that. Glendale has kind of many hours into making fleece blankets for the children that live at Mary's Place, which is a shelter in downtown Minneapolis. They donated 25 fleece blankets this year. And Kids Company is, continues to be dedicated to providing a warm blanket to those in need, and it is becoming a tradition to do that. And over the past three years, more than 130 children have participated in completing 100 blankets for families at Mary's Place. At Westwood, they make what's called caring blankets, and I think in a few moments, Dr. Groover has her blanket with her, and she can actually hold that up and show the audience. Every year, the Westwood Kids Company students, they create a caring quilt that they make squares for, and then they donate it to someone who's going through a hardship. The students then do a speech on why they think that people should get the quilt, and then the students vote on which person to select. Two years ago, they gave one to Dr. Groover when she was battling cancer, and last year, they did three quilts. This year, a quilt's being made for a student at Five Hocks who is battling leukemia. Oh, yes. And then that quilt is actually being given, or they're presenting it to the student and family on February 23rd, and I think Dr. Groover will be present. Do you want to hold up your quilts and show them?
Sure. Why don't I come over there?
All right. Each student actually designs and creates their own block, and then they're all sewn together.
I just have to say that I had the good fortune of being in the newspaper right after I was diagnosed with breast cancer two years ago, and because I was in the newspaper, the children's families received it. And because they thought of me when they were making this quilt, and they'd seen that in the paper, I was the lucky beneficiary of this beautiful handmade quilt by the students at Westwood in their Kids Co. And you know, of all the quilts I received, this was the one I used. Every single day, I'd come home from work, and I'd wrap up in this wonderful warm blanket, and I would smile because I would see one of these squares that reminded me of the students that made it. But I think the best story is when I went to receive it, I, I was obviously very bald. I, I think I, I'd already, obviously started chemo, and the students didn't say anything about my hair, but they did mention that I had a nice bracelet on, and they liked my dress. And so at the very, we got through my little presentation, I asked if there were any questions, and no one mentioned my hair. So I finally asked them if anyone noticed I was bald, and every head shook up and down. They had kind of picked up on that. And I said, "Well, are there any?" I tried to explain it to them as gently as I could, and at the end, a little girl, probably a first grader, said, her hand was up, and it was shooting up in the air. I mean, she had to be called on. You could see it was very urgent. And I asked her what her question was, and she said, "Did it hurt a lot when that doctor took your hair out?" So I hadn't explained it quite so gently, but I have those wonderful memories of those children, and I'm going to go back on February 23rd with my quilt as they present another quilt of warmth and of happy thoughts that they gave to me two years ago. And now I'm cancer-free, and I owe it all to the blanket.
The roar in Iraq and Afghanistan has impacted many families. So the students at Westwood decide to adopt the three, three families of their own whose dads are serving in Iraq, and two of the three dads came back and were honored with the handmade quilt. The students wrote speeches and did a presentation to them when they gave them the quilt. Parents and teachers came to the ceremony and were also part of this special event. It is very heartfelt, it was a very heartfelt experience and gives the students the opportunity to make a difference to others in the world. In addition to the quilt, Westwood Kids Company also teamed up with one of the teachers at the building to write letters to the soldiers who were serving in Iraq. A more recent service project is the Kids Company Pancake House, and this was done at Westwood as a thank you during January's National Thank You Month. And they actually hosted the event, and the staff made the pancakes, and the students made special place mats for everyone. And then they were the nice, awesome hostesses and the servers, and, and then they, they were really, really pleased that the event was well-attended, and they're probably looking at doing this again in the future as a service project, and they took real ownership in it. So we're proud of them. Kids Company families like to brighten the lives of our community, senior citizens, whenever they can, and will do service projects for them. And the last one that they've done was decorating cookies for those living at Prior Manor. And then they, they did actually the Valentine's this way, so. Yes. This month. And they have, yep. And I thought it was fun to find out as the director that they actually do this every month. So at Thanksgiving or different times, they come up with some sort of theme. So, let's see. In conclusion, I just wanted to let you know that there's a few other activities that the students are doing. I'll just highlight a few of those. They collect donations for various causes such as the Family Place, which is an organization that assists families in need. And they also collect donations and items for movie baskets that they give to the military families that are in the program. The students recently made Kool-Aid Play-Doh, and they did all the mixing, the measuring, figuring out the ingredients. They made 40 batches that they donated to our local preschools. And the Glendale students made and sent 30 cards to veterans in honor of Veterans Day. And the Glendale site recently made over 30 Valentines for Sarah Care, which is a daycare for seniors, and it's located in Savage. And the list obviously goes on and on, but we just wanted a few minutes tonight to showcase the great work of how kids are learning meaningful service to others by volunteering, coming up with projects, and hopefully, this will carry on throughout their life and their citizenship skills. Do you have any questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
This one.
Oh, go ahead. I was going to say, I was at Jeffers today in a Kids Company, and, and it's been a few years since I've had Kids in Kids Company. The energy was terrific. The kids were happy, they were thrilled to be there. I know when I used to take my daughter, she always wanted to go because there was always something going on, there was always something interesting. Your staff does a great job of really engaging these kids both before and after school.
Thank you.
And so, it's a, it's a real service to the community and a, and a help to parents.
Right.
You know, especially as we have some of the start times that we do.
Right.
It helps us make sure that, that families can, can be together as, as much as possible and still meet their, their needs.
And I, I do know the numbers in our Kids Co. have gone up over the last couple of years, and we've really tried to get the, and Becky has worked tirelessly to get those waiting lists off her plate so that all families who have a need can have that need met right there in their own building. And our staff, as Eric said, is just extraordinarily good, and, and their enthusiasm for students and children and for creativity. And I just really applaud you, Becky, and Leanne, for the great work Kids Co. does, not only in the building, but the kinds of service projects that they do and that lifelong learning that, that extends beyond the school day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is personnel items. Matt?
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Groover. First up, I would like to recommend the following candidates for approval, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidate? Says presented. So moved. By Rich. Second, by Stacy. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries five zero. Leaves of absence.
Second, I would like to present the following list of absences, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the leave of absence as presented? I move. By Todd. Second, by Tom. Any questions or discussions on leaves of absence? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries five zero. Now we've reached the point in time in our, in our meeting where we have open forum. This is an opportunity for residents of the district to address the board on any item, not on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to speak at open forum this evening? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to old business, open enrollment at Prior Lake High School. Dr. Groover?
Yes. On January 24th, our school board chose to open, open enrollment for a period of between one school board meeting and the next. During that time, we have accepted 13 students at the high school. This is for the high school only, and we are, I'm recommending now that we close open enrollment at Prior Lake High School for the remainder of the 2011 year.
Do I have a motion to close open enrollment at Prior Lake High School?
So moved.
By Stacy. Second, by Rich. Any questions or discussion?
The only thing I wanted to add was that open enrollment applications at other grade levels are being taken on a continual basis. Right now, we have middle school, eight applicants. At our elementary schools combined, we have eight applicants. At our kindergarten, we have 13 for a half-day and 45 for our full-day kindergarten, or extended day kindergarten program. So the closing of open enrollment is just for the high school. We will continue to take students at K through eight throughout the year.
Tom? And K through eight, there is, there is no problem with having the space for the, for the children?
No, we have space for the students.
And the 13 we have, as we discussed last time, no, no additional concerns. Growth Task Force has figured out that we have room for approximately, well, several thousand more students. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, opposed. That motion carries five zero. Approval of resolution, approving cooperative sponsorship agreement. Mr. Rodine?
Hi, how are we doing tonight?
We're good.
Excellent. I'm here to ask for a resolution to add a cooperative sponsorship for our synchronized swimming with Jordan High School. Synchronized swimming, currently, we have a team, and we have had a team for 27 years. There's a student from Jordan that Katie Bonesock has become acquainted, acquainted with, with her winter lessons that would like to, to join our team. So it would be a cooperative sponsorship. This would not cost anything to the district. The student would be billed at the end of the season when we figure out per student what it costs the district. So she would be billed for that. This also does not take away from any of the synchronized swimmers that currently are in Prior Lake High School and the two middle schools. Synchronized swimming is probably the most Marxist-type sport that we have in that kids have ample opportunity to swim either solo or dual, and then all the way up to team, and, and there's plenty of different teams on there.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the joint, joint resolution and cooperative sponsorship agreement?
I move.
By Todd. Second, by Tom. Any questions or discussion? Do we have any other agreements of this?
Oh, we do. We have a cooperative agreement for girls hockey with Belle Plain. We have a cooperative with Jordan for gymnastics, and also with Jordan for boys swimming and diving.
And no issues with those at all?
No, not at all. Nope.
Has Jordan, has Jordan taken action on this yet, or are they waiting?
No, they have, they're, they're waiting for us.
Okay.
Yep. We are, we're the, since we are the team, they cannot take action until we take action.
Where do we stand in that season? Are they joining partway through? Are they joining?
No, this is a spring sport.
Spring sport. Any other questions? Seeing none, this will take a roll call vote. Todd? I agree, yes. Rich?
Aye.
Aye, Stacy? And Tom?
Aye.
That motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is our capital facilities plan. Mr. Delwell?
Good evening, Chairman Pat, school board. Dr. Groover, in front of you is a list of capital facilities projects for school year Funding source for these projects is capital dollars and deferred maintenance levy. I could go through the list of projects if that's helpful. Otherwise, you can approve the, that's gone through the building committee already.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the capital facilities plan as presented? So moved. By Tom. Second.
Second.
By Stacy. Any questions or discussion? Yes, Tom? Like, it was mentioned this did go through the building committee, and it was, the building committee is in support of, of the capital.
That's correct. That's right, that's correct.
Any other questions?
I don't see any costs associated with these.
I have some budget numbers, but they're just best guess. We haven't, the projects haven't been approved yet, so I don't have any, I haven't gone out for numbers quite yet. I have an idea what the projects cost, and it's well within the budget of what typically is allowed for capital and deferred maintenance levy.
And these are part of a long-term plan?
Right, that's correct.
A lot of three pair. So we have a five-year capital plan that came before the board a couple of meetings ago, right?
Uh, no. We're working on a new long-term plan that addresses projects that are larger than what these two funding sources can accommodate.
But as far as our, as far as the cap, those funded out of the capital budget on an ongoing basis?
That's part of the new plan that we're working on right now.
Okay. And that will be ready?
Sometime within the next month, six weeks.
And Eric, maybe you can help me here. Is any of the referendum money dedicated to capital improvement that we get? Wasn't, didn't we pass a capital improvement?
We have a bond several years ago for deferred maintenance.
That bond money is, is no longer, we no longer have bond money. That bond ran out last year.
Okay.
But no, we don't use, we don't use excess levy, and maybe Julie can speak to this even better, we don't use excess levy to fund capital projects. Excess levy funds on a per pupil basis go directly to the classroom. Love you for learning. Easy way to remember it. Bond for building.
That's, that's right. Levies for learning, bonds for building.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adoption of staff reduction resolution. Miss Sing.
Good evening. This resolution is something that the board, comes to the board every year, and they adopt it, and it's for reductions in programs and positions and reasons, and we know that for sure this year that we do have reductions due to the change in the high school and middle school to the sixth period day. And there's possibly additional reductions due to our enrollment at the elementary level. So this would be a resolution just allowing us to make those reductions at the proper time.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for, for staff reduction? So moved. By Tom. Second?
Second.
By Rich. Uh, any questions or discussion?
Being a rookie, I'm gonna ask you a couple. Is this resolution then mandated by our agreement with the union or in by the state?
It is a resolution that we have to, in order to make reductions in staffing, yes.
Per state statute or?
Is not. That would be correct.
Okay.
But Julie, this also follows our contractual obligations as well, right?
Yes, and that's why we do it now, so that we do, um, follow those contractual obligations that we have with our teaching staff.
And so this, i- as I understand it, this resolution just simply is the board giving the administration the authority to look at it, and then any of those cuts will come back before the board for final approval.
Right, we will bring back those recommendations to the board at a later date.
And might I add, we know that we're cutting the one point four.
Right.
But we also know that, um, there may be other opportunities for us to, uh, reduce the, because of what has happened at the legislature right now. We had a good conversation last week with, um, Senator Robling and Representative Beard about what they see happening, their forecasting of what is happening at, at the capital. But it's really too soon to know exactly how this is gonna play out. Uh, so this allows us the flexibility, if you will, to be able to make additional cuts if they're needed. If we see enrollment dropping at a, in a certain area, we can make adjustments. Uh, but we need this authority by the board in order to do that as we prepare the eleven-twelve, um, budget and school year.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a roll call vote again. So, uh, Todd?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Uh, aye.
Aye.
Stacy and Tom?
Aye.
That motion passes five zero. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is early retirement incentive. Matt Mons?
All right. I would like to present for you a proposal for an early retirement incentive. And, um, through the federal jobs bill, we were given a unique opportunity that we can take advantage of here that can benefit both our teaching staff and also the district. And what this will allow us to do is recognize the dedication from our most veteran teachers. And it will also, in the wake of seeing that we've got staff reduction, reductions looming, allow us to save jobs from some of our, uh, newer staff members. And so what we're proposing is a twenty-five thousand dollar retirement incentive. And that twenty-five thousand dollar incentive could be used by the teachers for a number of options, um, which is detailed on the, on the screen in front of you. And the district is going to reach, uh, recognize substantial savings through this process. The general fund, if we had fifteen teachers retire, which would be the minimum, uh, number of retirements we would need to proceed with this program, would be five hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. That is an approximate savings, um, to the best of our abilities. And if we had twenty teachers retire, which would be our flexible cap on this program, the general fund would recognize a savings of seven hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars. And when I just said flexible cap there, what I mean by that is that if by, if we're foreseeing that by March fifteenth, we are going to have more than twenty teachers who would like to participate in this program, we will come back before the board to have future discussion on whether or not we would like to allow more than twenty, um, participants in the program. So with that, I make the proposal.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, uh, uh, accept or adopt, uh, an early retirement, early retirement incentive?
I move.
By Todd. Second?
Second.
By Tom. Uh, any questions or discussion? Yes, Rich?
Um, once we get the number of teachers who retire, will you be then coming back to us with that number or not?
With that number, I will certainly let you know, uh, the results and what this is going to look like in its finality. But as long as it is between that fifteen to twenty range, um, I wouldn't seek further approval. But I'll certainly make sure that the board is updated on how we're coming along through that process.
And Matt, how many, um, I know you told us this before, but how many teachers are eligible for this based on?
Um, based on what we have right here, it'd be fifty-four teachers that would be eligible to participate in that, in this program.
And it isn't based on seniority, it's first come, first served?
That's correct. This would be first come, first served. So the first fifteen to twenty individuals would be guaranteed that they would be able to participate in the program. Those individuals that would indicate interest beyond twenty, we would then, again, come forward to the board to, to ask for your input and how we'd like to proceed.
And the timeline is?
And the timeline is March fifteenth. We do need to be aware of anybody's indication that they would like to take advantage by March fifteenth.
Is that the normal timeframe of retirement?
It's not. It's actually March first, but we wanted to make sure that we were giving our employees the time that they would need to, um, consult with their families, to consult with financial advisors, and make sure that, uh, all of their questions were answered before they had to make a decision.
And it, our next, our board meeting is on the fifteenth, is it not?
Fourteenth.
On the fourteenth. So is the deadline the fifteenth? I was wondering if we were gonna be able to bring that back on the fourteenth or?
Uh, it is currently set as the fifteenth. Um, you know, and I think that we might want a little bit of time to actually gauge and see what that interest is. We, we might want a little bit more time with those numbers regardless. So we could make it the fourteenth, but then, um, I, I don't know that I'm, we're going to be able to have all of the information that the board might re, might want before making that decision to expand beyond twenty.
And if there are less than fifteen?
If there are less than fifteen, then it's not going to make financial sense for the district to offer this incentive.
So if there are fourteen people?
If there are fourteen, yep, then we won't be able to proceed with the, with the plan.
We'll retract.
And you had reviewed that, uh, normal staff retirement was approximately seven to nine teachers per?
That's correct. It, it's been somewhere between seven and ten.
And there will be a staff meeting. Would you speak to that, uh, for those individuals?
Thank you. We are going to be hosting a staff meeting, and we're going to be notifying all of our eligible employees. Uh, that meeting's going to be held on Thursday here, the seventeenth, at the high school at four-thirty P.M. And, uh, that's going to be in the, uh, lecture hall at the high school on the second floor.
And we've reviewed this with Prior Lake Education Association?
That's correct. I've, uh, I've been working with the PLSCA, um, and, and they're aware of the proposal.
Great. Any questions? Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, the first reading of policy. Dr. Gruber?
Yes, it is policy four-ten, family and medical leave policy. And this policy was reviewed by, uh, Mr. Mons, um, in terms of, uh, current MSBA wording, and also in terms of making sure that our policy is up to date with where we want it to be for our own employees. Do you want to speak to that?
Um, I think I'd really like to just address the major changes that are being made. Uh, one thing that was conspicuously absent in our policy previously was, uh, those portions of it that would pertain to employees taking a leave because of an active, uh, service member, being a member of their family, being deployed, et cetera. And so, um, the vast majority of the changes that have been made to this policy just reflect that inclusion of that class of individuals who, um, are statutorily protected, uh, in any case. And so this is just allowing our staff members to, uh, more easily wade through the leave process and understand what is available to them.
Okay. Any questions on the policy? Changes? Okay, this is a first reading, so this will be coming back to us. If, if you find any questions or discussions, uh, feel free to contact, uh, anyone on the policy committee or Mr. Mons?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, with that, we are at the, uh, administrative report, superintendent's report.
I'm just gonna pass these around. Uh, my main point to make tonight is that it is School Board Recognition Week, the week of February twenty-first through twenty-fifth. And, uh, I have a resolution that's in the board packet, which I, I won't be reading, but I will highlight the words of it, uh, because it is important for our community to, to know and for us to recognize, uh, the work of our school board throughout the year, not just during one week. Um, but these people serve a vital role in, in making sure that, um, the, the mission of our school district is upheld and that we are moving forward in a, a trajectory of excellence. And that is what they've been doing and continue to do each day. They give up their family time and, and sometimes, uh, trade work time in order to be here and to be available for, not only for our school board meetings, but for our study sessions, for our committee meetings, for their visits to the schools and their visits with students, for the important work that needs to be done on behalf of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. So I would like to recognize our school board, uh, during this upcoming week, and I invite the community to do as well. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
And, um, the other thing that I, other point I wanted to make was that I did attend a Savage Planning Commission open hearing last Thursday night, uh, and the several of the dads, uh, that were here earlier were also at that meeting to discuss what's gonna be happening with the Planning Commission, um, at the corner of forty-two and thirteen behind the Rainbow Foods. Um, and it was a pleasure to be there. I've told many of you, um, how respectful the group was, how they were able to state their opinions very differently, but in a respectful nature, um, and stay to the point. Uh, it was a very well-run meeting, uh, by your planning commission in Savage, but also allowed our community an opportunity to speak. Uh, and that was, um, was really quite impressive. It was a long meeting. Um, it went on for quite a while, but it was important, I think, for me to be there because, um, there were previous conversations about the space and the capacity in our district. And, um, and I, I need to say this, I think probably every meeting, but we do have space in our schools for students. Our high school, yes, has many students in it, but when we redid, uh, our growth task course numbers, we found out that indeed we have three empty classrooms on any given hour because we don't have, uh, the teachers to be able to teach those classes. We have students in our schools, but there is always room for more. Our high school is closed to open enrollment now after the action a few minutes ago, but our, the rest of our schools remain open, uh, particularly our elementary schools. So, uh, dispel the myth that, uh, we are full. We are not. We have space in many of our schools. Uh, we have three larger schools and three smaller schools. So, uh, in any one of those schools, we are welcoming students. We're a public school system, and we welcome everyone that lives within our district. And for those that wish to open enroll, we are available to have that conversation as well. So I did that last Thursday evening, and it was, uh, it was, it was a good evening. It was good to be there, and I'll be back on the February twenty-second, uh, when the city council meets. And that is all I have for you.
Okay. Any other administrative reports? Any board reports? I'll just, uh, talk about the, uh, we took action on the, um, uh, early retirement incentive. Uh, that was reviewed with the certified committee ahead of time, and then the full board got a chance to walk through that as we held a, uh, an open finance committee meeting. So, um, we were able to take action on that this evening, and, and hopefully that's a, uh, a well-received, uh, offer. All right. Um, future events. We have President's Day coming up on the twenty-first, uh, kindergarten, uh, district-wide registration on the twenty-second, our regular school board meeting on the twenty-fourth, and we are having a study session, uh, to discuss, uh, the SS dime proposal, and then an open forum for the public to comment on March seventh. Uh, with that, um, it's been requested that we close the meeting.
One more. Sure. And when is the date, again, for that future of the schools?
February twenty-third.
February. Did you mention that, Eric?
I think.
It wasn't in my agenda.
And February, yeah, thank you. Um, and February twenty-third is a fut- future in our schools where I'm gonna be hosting a, a conversation with preschool parents, the elementary parents, mostly preschool parents, about what they would like to see in our schools. Would they like all of our schools to be exactly alike, or would they like one to have a, a STEM or science, technology, engineering, math focus, or to have an immersion focus? Um, so we'll be having those conversations. I've started them this fall through my Java Jive, uh, and I will continue that with this, uh, parent focus group that's coming up, uh, on the twenty-third. And we decided to hold it here at the district office.
At what time?
It will be at six-thirty.
Okay. Any other future events? Okay. Uh, seeing none. Again, it's been requested that we, uh, uh, move into closed session to discuss, uh, disciplinary action. So I'll take a motion to close the meeting. By Stacy. Second, by Rich. Um, any questions or discussion? Okay, we're back. Uh, I'd like a motion to reopen, uh, the school board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Rich. Second.
Second.
By Stacy. Uh, we are now back in open session, and on the agenda we have, um, a resolution on the proposed expulsion of a student. Um, Mr. Mons?
Uh, we do recommend expulsion in this case.
Okay. Um, this is a roll call vote, so, uh...
I think we need a motion this afternoon.
I'm sorry, I need a motion. Motion to, I have a motion.
Give us a second.
That was just to reopen the meeting.
Well, that was to reopen the meeting, I'm sorry. So I need a motion to, uh, approve the resolution for expulsion.
So moved.
By Stacy. Second.
Second.
By Todd.
Quick question, Eric?
Yes.
Do we have to read? I guess we don't read?
No, we don't have to read the, the resolution.
Rules are.
Okay. So, um, now we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Seeing none. Uh, Todd?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Aye, Stacy?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
That motion carries five zero. And since there's no other meeting, any other business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Stacy. Second. By Todd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries five zero, and we stand adjourned. Can I get your hammer?